Well, welcome everyone to the Norton Planning Boards Meeting of Tuesday, January eighteenth. As with our previous meeting, this meeting is being held the remote participation only due to the spike in COVID cases in Massachusetts. Again, to join online via video, join using the Zoom link available in the meeting agenda posted with the meeting agenda, or using the Zoom app using meeting ID six three eight nine two nine one zero six zero. There is also a dial-in number and meeting ID available on the agenda. He's also able to review a Norton Cable access. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting, or even during the meeting to Paul De Giuseppe, the town planner, whose email address is listed on the meeting agenda. Again, every effort is being made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event they were unable to do so, despite best efforts, we'll post on the town board's website an audio, a video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive recording of the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. So, welcome everybody again. Again, just kind of starting off our agenda here in terms of planning board business and policies. I don't think we have anything open at that's in that respect at this point. In terms of bills and warrants, Paul, is there anything additional that we should be reviewing in that respect or nothing yet? Okay. I saw your no, even though you were muted briefly, so I took that and was about to go with it, but. Okay, we also have two sets of minutes which were sent to us, members of the board with the meeting agenda. We have minutes from, let me pull up the documents here in front of me, August the twenty-fourth and January the fourth, so kind of kicking it, doing one old one and one new one as we go, which I think is probably a good cadence here. Just to make sure we're not just spending an hour approving minutes and going minute blind. So we'll start with the August the twenty-fourth minutes. One thing that I had Brian and I'll apologize, I didn't mention this to you prior to the meeting. When we're talking about the master plan, we should be referencing CERPED, which is an acronym for the Massachusetts, so I always mess up what the acronym actually stands for, Paul. But Southeastern Regional Planning and I always.
Development District.
There we go.
Yeah.
I believe at the moment it's noted in the minutes as serpent, meaning snake. I generally don't associate that connotation with that group. So if we can just do a finally replace on that.
Sorry.
No, sorry, Wayne did have mentioned that to me beforehand, and I did correct it on mine now. But okay, that was before I knew the acronym, so I just heard serpent and I wrote it.
Yep, that makes sense. But and just a little bit of inside humor there. Are there any additional comments or edits to the minutes for members of the board that are here? Okay. Maybe like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-fourth as amended.
Okay, thank you Wayne for the motion and Alan for the second. Is any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Wayne, I'm going to start with you.
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Let's hear the minutes of August the twenty-fourth. We also have minutes from our previous meeting of January the fourth. Are there any additional comments or notes on this set of minutes?
Motion to approve the January fourth minutes.
Second.
Okay, thank you Alan for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Wayne, I will start with you again.
Yes.
Julie?
I'll abstain since I was absent from the meeting.
Okay, Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. So that takes care of those agenda items. The next item on our agenda is we have an A and R endorsement, number one, two, nine, four, five, for zero South Washington Street, the owner applicant Norton Development, Inc. Paul, I'm not sure if I see anybody on the call here from that application.
You do, it's Michael Dryden.
I apologize, right in the middle of my screen and I did not see it.
Right.
Okay. So Mr. Dryden, just so you know, all the members of the boards do have access to the documents submitted. So we do have the site plan. But if you want to just kind of give us a quick overview of what's going on here, we're splitting one lot into four, correct?
Actually, two lots each into two lots, so.
Two to four, okay.
Yeah, let me just introduce myself quickly. Michael Dryden, Senior Project Manager with Allen Engineering here on behalf of the owner applicant. Was Norton Development, Inc., and you may recall back in, I believe it was August of twenty twenty, we submitted an A and R plan for this same lot one at the northern tip of the property. The deal that was in the works for that split never happened, so that endorsed A and R for lot one was never recorded. So now what we're bringing into the fold is we're going to sort of reintroduce that lot one division and then add to it lot three, which is the southern tip of the property and divide it into two lots as well. Pretty straightforward, all four new lots meet area, fringe requirements, upwind requirements, shape factor requirements. It's really that simple and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And just to confirm existing lot two in the middle of all of that has nothing happening whatsoever.
That's correct. That's been sold off. There's a solar field there, you may know.
Okay. Any questions for members of the board for Mr. Dryden?
Chair, motion to endorse the A and R.
And.
Okay, thank you Julie for the motion and Wayne for the second. So any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll start with Wayne.
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Mr. Admetra, if Paul already has a Mylar or documentation that he needs, but he and I will coordinate getting that signed for you.
Excellent. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is a continuation of public hearing one, two, five, eight, seven for zero South Washington Street. We do have a few moving pieces with this project, as you, as members are aware from materials Paul has forwarded to your inbox. So just in terms of just to restate a little bit of that, Carroll Advertising, which as we recall did the previous billboard on next to four ninety-five, has stated a position based on an agreement with the town for the previous billboard with their legal counsel. So some of those materials have been provided to us for review, including that agreement. In terms of kind of order of operations here, what I'm going to, what I think makes sense for us to do is we'll let those parties speak to this, to this matter. We can listen to them, we can ask questions. We'll close that and then we'll move on to the continuation with the action with further presentations that we requested from American Outdoor and the Musto applicants. So Paul, I know you had been in discussion kind of with town council regarding this discussion. And essentially the determination that came back from town council was that whatever agreement was in place with the select board on mitigation does not necessarily impact our decision, correct?
That's correct, and just board, so you're, I just received that note from the town manager shortly after our meeting started.
Okay.
Correct, that's what council's opinion is.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Munusian, I will let you get to giving the rest of your presentation for your client. But I just see Mr. Brady, if you're here and you would like to speak, I'll let you speak in regards to the letter you submitted to us. And the board can evaluate that how they will, and then we'll continue to move on with the rest of this, our review of the rest of this project.
Thank you, Tim. Jim Brady, I represent Carroll Advertising. I would like to hear the presentation by the applicant and then I'll make comments in the public hearing section to be made part of the record in response to the applicant's proposal.
The public hearing is, has been, the continued public hearing is currently open, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but I want, I want to reserve my time to speak and rebuttal if necessary to the comments being made by the applicant. I will speak to the issue raised by Paul. Oh, hold on, sorry, hit the wrong button there, raised by Paul about town council's opinion. I, I think they're wrong. I mean, I think we spelled out quite clearly the mitigation agreement that the town entered into with Carroll Advertising, upon which Carroll Advertising relay, has relied and has paid, has paid three hundred thousand dollars. I think, you know, you take a look at the agreement, it speaks for itself, it's pretty clear. Council, I know, has a different opinion, I haven't seen it, but this particular one, I did have a discussion some months ago with Sharon, her name was, I think, and she took the position that probably similar to what she's telling Mike units now, but I think she's very much missing the point here and we want to avoid any kind of continuation of this, but Mr. Carroll's application will be forthcoming and the timeframe during which the Board of Selectmen extended that agreement, I sent that to Paul later this afternoon, was a vote by the Board of Selectmen on September ninth, where they extended the agreement for additional six months. So, and I'm sorry I didn't have that earlier, I would have submitted with my documents yesterday, but so I, I think it's very clear cut, I think that the board, we're asking the board to do, and again, I want to reserve some time, add in it later, later in this hearing if necessary. We were looking for the board to do is, first of all, on the merits of the proposal, it poses a nuisance as defined in the statute, in your bylaws to extended stay America, and secondly, the contract between Carroll Advertising and the town is quite enforceable and we intend to enforce it if the town doesn't end up to its side of the bargain, so those are my preliminary comments.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. I understand, I understand your position. The board members do have a copy of your letter. We do have a copy of the agreement. I am not a lawyer, so I will respect the advice of town council as I feel is appropriate, but I also have a brain and can read words. I like to think that the members of the board can do the same. And again, I will kind of let you comment later if you feel it's necessary. But again, I do want to, as I've given deference to you in starting kind of this aspect of the presentation, I want to give Mr. Munusian and anyone else that is speaking on behalf of the other applicant the same.
Of course, yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Munusian, I know we had given you a couple of pieces of homework and pardon the, pardon the term, since I just finished up with my six-year-old. If you want to kind of, kind of restate the additional documents that you submitted to us in terms of the updated plans and in terms of any other materials you'd like to present this evening.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board and Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is David Munuji and I'm an attorney in Attleboro, representing the applicant American Outdoor. With me tonight is its principal Steve Ross, and also tonight from Lighthouse Land Surveying is Rick Reed. And also, as requested, Representative of Watchfire, the sign company, and that gentleman is Michael Cox. Michael's the Senior Electrical Engineering Manager for Watchfire. I'll add parenthetically that Watchfire has over sixty thousand digital signs in operation worldwide. As you recall the last meeting, we presented a lighting study and that directly addressed the assertion of extended stay America that this sign would pose a nuisance to it in that the light from the sign would impose on the windows of the extended stays guests and they stay there for a week or two or longer, and therein lies the nuisance. They also disclosed that, you know, obviously they're in discussions with Mr. Carroll on a proposed location for a sign, but as of that last meeting, they had not formalized those negotiations or come to some conclusion. Be that as it may, what we'd like to present to you tonight, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is the lighting study imposed on our site plan, so you can see that we're not going to pose any nuisance to extended stay and that we've addressed the only issue that was raised by extended stay, and that is the shining of light on their guest windows at the hotel. So that'll be done in a minute by Mr. Reed. If you have any questions on the louver system or of Watchfire's engineer, Mr. Cox, he's certainly ready to take and field your questions. And Mr. Chairman, after that presentation is done, I'll address the opposition of Mr. Carroll. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Rick take us through the submission of the new survey and explain what's going on with that. So Rick, if you could take over, and I think you can share the screen.
Thank you, David. Again, my name is Richard Reed, represent Lighthouse Land Surveying, who's done the survey of the property. We have prepared a couple of documents. I'll share my screen real quick here. In particular.
And these are the two documents that were submitted last week, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, so what we, we heard the board request last week was ultimately the opportunity to see the viewing angles of the billboards, the lighting itself, and also its effect with the louver system. So what we're able to do is basically, well, we actually did two things. Certainly, we heard the abutter's concerns regarding, call it the light impact. So after conferring with American Outdoor, we decided to rotate the billboard even more so while still maintaining the same location. And what I've done here is on the right side of the billboard, that in particular, the billboard section that actually faces the side of the American extended stay America. We've extended the thirty-degree angle. There was a louvered angle of thirty degrees typically that it deflects and basically plotting out about, I think I did about five hundred feet, the extension of that billboard and the lighting. And what we ended up doing is rotating the billboard to such that basically we're actually missing that back corner by a foot and a half. Trying to not, not only address their concerns, but pretty much try to eliminate as much as possible. Extended, the young lady had mentioned that the hotel rooms typically face the, call it the longitudinal faces, not the end faces. So technically, we're even moving it even further away from the actual hotel rooms themselves. And as a result, we've kind of been able to successfully address their main concerns. We certainly heard that last time. And she did state that the hotel was on average about thirty-five, thirty feet tall, stating again that the billboard is at a height of ninety feet, thus giving us roughly around sixty feet of height above the rooms themselves, so quite literally, we don't feel anybody would be able to see anything, even if they were to strain themselves looking out the very top window at the very end unit and look up towards the billboard.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Not sure, I may have one, but I'll defer to any other members of the board who may have anything in advance other than myself. I'm certainly only one member here, so. It's tougher to give non-verbal cues over Zoom, so I'm just going to sit here and wait for a second. But okay, I think that makes sense and obviously that was a fairly deliberate choice by, by you just to have that thirty-degree angle miss the building. In terms of the thirty-degree angle, that's obviously driven by that Watchfire louver system, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So Mr. Munuji and I, thank you again for having the representative from Watchfire here. I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Cox or more of a generic one, but just in terms of how that louver system works, it was described to us last time essentially as kind of the the hoods that appear roughly on stoplights, so you can only see the light coming from straight on or basically in the direction it's intended for. If there's any additional kind of detail for that, I saw kind of independent of this, I saw kind of a pseudo press release editorial from maybe about eighteen months ago, which is still kind of new, so just in terms of understanding how new the technology is, how many installations it has, that would be something that'd be interesting.
Well, Michael, I think you're on. If Michael can address that and I, before Michael starts, Rick, do we still have that video queued up that we could show later?
Yeah, actually, I was just trying to find that. I'll let.
So why don't you have, let's have Michael go ahead and describe its system. And then we do have a video that could give you some idea of it also, so Michael, if you could answer the chair's question.
Sure, yeah, so the, that's a good comparison to the of a stoplight. Very similar, I guess, methodology to how we designed this louver. It essentially, you know, the LEDs themselves, they actually have a pretty narrow viewing angle, they're, you know, meant for the specific type of application. And then on top of that, we, you know, have this, what we call light blocking louver technology that basically covers the sides of the LEDs to that angle, that thirty-degree angle that they showed in the plan there. So basically beyond thirty degrees, you know, it blocks almost all the light coming from the billboard. It is a, it, it's a patent pending design from us. We have applied for a patent for it. It's fairly new from a technology standpoint, you know, we, we started researching it about four years ago, seeing the need in the market for this type of technology and started the design work and finished it, well, would have been during COVID times, so in twenty, mid twenty twenty, let's say. And so, you know, again, in grand scheme of things, fairly new to us, but we do have several installations throughout the US of this type of system already.
I was able to find that video, if, if it pleases you, I can certainly play that, it's about twenty-five second video and kind of best demonstrate.
I think that would help and then, Michael, as the video's playing, you can comment on what the board is seeing, so if we could do that.
Yep.
All right, so there it goes. So there's two parts to this, there's a top and the bottom. The top actually reflects what the billboard would be without louvers and the very bottom, and I'm kind of prefacing this because you do have to keep an eye on it. But the bottom is actually the louvered section.
Yeah, so like you said, the top would be like a traditional billboard and the bottom is this new light blocking technology. So you can see straight on, they look identical, and then when you get off angle, the bottom pretty much fades away to nothing at almost right around thirty degrees where the top is still fully visible. And then it, you know, just keeps going essentially to black as you get further off angle.
Would anyone like to see that again?
I think Rick has anticipated your request.
Yes.
I think it's good to see the repetition here, yeah. So just again, I'm going to ask the silly question. In this, this is just kind of a stock demonstration. In the plan that Ricky had just shown, it was basically that there wouldn't be light past thirty degrees, is that kind of, is this a system where you build it for thirty, you build it and you say, I need to block out forty-five degrees or thirty degrees?
No, it's actually thirty degrees is the, the only option, basically. It's designed to block at that angle.
Okay, so what, so what we saw in the animated demonstration is essentially what we would see at forty-five, thirty degrees, so it wouldn't be completely black from thirty-five degrees, but it'd be pretty dark, is the idea.
Correct, yeah, you still get some reflection. The LED itself is not visible, but you get some reflection from, you know, essentially the surrounding louver structure.
So when you put out that much light, some of it's bound to bounce in one direction, basically.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cox, it's very helpful in terms of kind of understanding it in the animation, I think. I'll speak for myself in saying that kind of, I think that makes sense in terms of how it would apply and I can kind of visualize how that would play out in kind of a real world scenario. And members of the board have any questions based on those materials?
Tim, I have one. But Kevin, go ahead, you go first.
Thank you, Julie. So those louvers protect the horizontal angle at thirty degrees or forty-five degrees or however you want to interpret the video. How about vertically? For example, was mentioned that the billboard would be about sixty feet taller than the, than the hotel. How does it look from the ground up? Do those louvers protect the casting of light down below as well?
Yes, they do. So, you know, the LEDs we use in this application are really narrow up and down, they're about forty-five degree viewing angle. So just the nature of the LEDs themselves, it's already a pretty narrow beam of light. These louvers do just, again, the nature of the designs, they do block from the bottom as well. But it's not typically in these situations, like we didn't, there was no intention there to to set a specific blocking angle from, from below.
I'm wondering if they would be casting a light on the back of the building below the billboard itself over the parking lot, perhaps even their first floor units.
As I look at the plan here, I mean, the building is beyond that thirty-degree mark, so really, there shouldn't be. uh really, there shouldn't be any light cast uh no matter what, even if the billboard was sitting on the ground. Uh so certainly ninety feet in the air, it'll be uh, you know, again, no light cast on that building.
And obviously doesn't speak to the rest of the the lot, but speaks to the building, basically, is what you're, yeah.
Yeah, that, thank you. I think you answered it. I I'm I was mainly interested in because the billboard is so high uh above the hotel. I'm actually more interested in the um the light that's uh, you know, being cast uh below it rather than you know, horizontally off of it at a thirty degree angle. So I think you answered it. Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Welcome.
And Julie, you had a question as well. I'm not sure if that covered it or.
Nope, nope. Mine was a different question, but but good questions from Kevin as always. Um is the so looking at the graphic, the thirty degree angle is only, you know, on one side of the billboard. Are the louvers not on the second face of the billboard? They're only on one or are they both? I just want a clarification of why there's a thirty degree on one side and then a seventy degree on the other.
Yeah, uh the opposite side of the opposing billboard does have the standard louver system. Or I should uh not the louver system, but the standard LED system, which has a seventy degree viewing angle. And being that it is projecting out technically over woods, um there really was no need to uh to throw the louvers on that side. You know, again, trying to address the butters closest of butters concerns uh versus just straight up woods.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies my question. Thank you.
You would prefer not to buy three thousand pieces of steel that you don't need to is the understood. Um any other questions for members of the board regarding this aspect of the presentation? And then we can kind of move on to um the rest of the materials Mr. Manu- Manujian was going to cover. Okay. Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Cox. That was very helpful. Um Mr. Manujian, if you want to kind of continue, I know you're kind of an agenda of what you were looking to cover, so I'll let you continue with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh members of the board, I think we've addressed all of your concerns with the uh presentation this evening and the prior presentation that demonstrates my client uh at the discretion of the board, obviously, but we've met all the criteria for the uh special permit is embodied in the bylaw. We've addressed the concerns. We've addressed the only point of opposition, which was extended stay. Um and the light issue, and we've addressed that. Um that was their only point of contention. They did admit that they were in discussions with Mr. Carroll for a sign on that property. But as I said earlier, that really makes no difference because competition or in and of itself does not give one standing to oppose a uh a special permit or any other type of zoning relief. So I think, as I said before, and I still maintain, the opposition of extended stay was pretty much a thinly veiled effort just to preclude my client from going forward uh before Mr. Carroll has a chance to file, and he still hasn't filed. Now, to address the issue of this mitigation agreement, um you know, my client isn't a part of this agreement. We're being drawn into this fray unwillingly, but we have to respond because it could protect potentially adversely affect my client. Uh I think it's important for the board to understand that its jurisdiction in whatever dispute develops between Mr. Carroll and the select board is separate and distinct from this board's jurisdiction. This board's jurisdiction is to receive an application, hear the application, and decide it on the merits based upon the board's discretion as a special permit granting authority and the evidence presented before it. This mitigation agreement and the threat that, you know, the town's gonna be sued and you can't do this, you can't get my client a permit, I think is another, you know, uh obvious attempt just to have my client be denied the relief he's seeking. And I think that's patently unfair. So I want to stress again to the board that your jurisdiction is separate and dispute and is separate and distinct. And I would urge you to set aside any allegations with respect to that mitigation agreement, any contentions uh between the borders to the select board and Mr. Carroll. It simply isn't relevant to my client's application. Having said that, I think it's important to note that what Mr. Brady is trying to impress the board to do is to say that any billboard granted in the town of Norton can only be granted after he gets his two. Now, that's not contract zoning, alright? That's an illegal contract zoning methodology. If you look at that mitigation agreement, nothing in the body of the agreement reflects the exclusive provisions on which Mr. Brady asserts his argument. It's only in a preamble. Alright, and I don't, and I would side with town council, obviously, and I think this is her concern. If you follow Mr. Brady's logic, he's by his contract with the town. He's now saying that any third party, not a party to that contract, is precluded from either seeking relief or getting relief granted. Such a contract, I would assert, is void on its face, as unenforceable as being against public policy and against the public interest. And there's plenty of contracts like that, and I think this falls within it. Because if you follow his logic, you're depriving my client of his constitutional rights under the federal constitution and the Commonwealth's Constitution of seeking relief from this board, the municipal agency, and having, and if the board so concludes, granting that relief. So I would assert that you can base your decision tonight on anything that's within the ambit of your board's jurisdiction, not that mitigation agreement. If you were to say the decision, well, we'd like it to, we'd like you to uh have a special permit because we can't because he's got this mitigation agreement, or just defer to see how it plays out, I would object to that. My request to the board tonight is simply, if you're satisfied you have enough information uh on the issues unrelated to the mitigation agreement, close a public hearing and make your decision. And then move on. The battle that Mr. Brady is seeking is not with your board, it's with the select board. Let them handle it. Town council has an opinion, he has an opinion. I don't want to get into this fray, but I have to because of the potential impact of my to my client. So um you know, Mr. Brady isn't here for extended stay. He asked that the application be denied of the merits from what extended say stay said in his last presentation. I think we've defeated those quote anecdotal uh uh assertions of extended stay by the way we've designed this. And I might add, I travel frequently. In fact, I'm coming to you from my daughter's house in New Jersey tonight. And I can't tell you how many extended stays I've seen around here on busy highways with lights, digital billboards right in front of their establishment. So I'll let you determine whether that opposition from extended stay is meritorious or not. But um I would like you to respectfully assert to close the public hearing and make whatever decision you make, but not taking into consideration the existence of the mitigation agreement between the town and uh Mr. Carroll. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if you have, or any of the members of the board have any more questions of me and my client, you would rest and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Manujian. Um members of the board, do we have any additional questions for Mr. Manujian at this point? And after that, I would go to see if there are any members of the public who would like to speak. Uh and then Mr. Brady, if you'd like to add anything, I will give you the opportunity. Okay, uh if there are no more questions for Mr. Manujian uh or American Outdoor at this time, uh there members, any members of the public here who would like to add any additional comments or quite or raise any questions that they have? Again, if you'd like to, yep. All I see is uh Kim on the uh on the Zoom meeting here. If you could just state uh your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, absolutely. This is Kim Myers. I'm with my husband Todd Myers. We're at ninety-two King Philip Road. And we are actually across the highway. So our, my concern is how this is going to affect um I received notice about the application and was looking tonight at some of the information and it looks like our dwelling is right at a thousand feet from the billboard. And I just wanted to know how this is going to affect, you know, us across the highway and our right to enjoyment as well.
Okay, um let me see. Um Paul, I'm not sure if you have this available or if um Rick, if you have this available, I know in the previous session that we had um just kind of a, I think a wider view um kind of where that thousand foot drop off would be and what the light levels were at that point. Um let me see if I can find it here. I believe, yes, I believe I have it here. I'll pull that up. Uh if I can figure out how to share my screen, I guess that's another thing. Uh how do I?
Rick may have that thousand foot, so I'll ask Rick to see if he has that.
I've got it here.
Scroll to the bottom.
I've got it here. I've got the original one, because I think that one's um so this is kind of the proposed location of the billboard. Um and I believe at this point, it's actually been this is from the previous one, and it's been turned a little bit counterclockwise.
Hey, Tim.
Um pointing in your direction, yeah.
I can't see your screen. Oh, here it comes. Okay, hold on.
I apologize.
That's okay. I just figured, maybe I'm the only one, but I might have been a delay. Okay, I can see it.
So this is um the location of the extended stay and the proposed location of the billboard and the viewing angles in that direction. Um and in terms of the uh that grid actually only goes to five hundred feet. Um and this lighting study um says that basically at five hundred feet at straight on, um it's a point zero three uh foot candle, uh which is the measurement of light at a distance, which I believe is uh the brightness of a candle a foot away from you. Uh so at a thousand feet, I think that would probably drop off fairly precipitously. Um I don't think I, I don't think the chart has anything going to a thousand feet, but um in terms of brightness at a hundred feet, and then it drops off when you get to five hundred feet down to point oh three. Um Rick, I'm not sure if I did a good job there. If you want to share something differently or?
Uh the only thing I would add is uh my survey, which uh did include the uh aerial photography and the actual one thousand foot distance. Um and I could show you that. I don't have the light levels.
Um I have given up control, so please take it.
Let's see. It's uh this one here. There we go. Um I've turned on the the uh aerial imagery, uh the location of uh the dwelling, um and of course, the thousand foot distance showing the uh location of the uh billboard. And you know, we're we're well beyond the one thousand foot requirement um from a residence. Light levels, I I I can attest to. But this is the five hundred, which actually falls just shy of the highway. Um and um as a result, yeah, you're you're right. It's it's twice the distance. And not to mention the vegetation that uh exists um between the highway um and the dwelling itself.
Okay.
I guess I would just, I also would just wanna um I'm I'm really quite, obviously quite curious as to what I'm gonna be able to see just looking out in my backyard. Of course, there is, it's a wooded area. We do see, you know, I can see the highway straight through. It's not as if this is all extremely heavily wooded where nothing is disturbed. So um you know, I think that would be my concern as well is, you know, just looking out in the backyard and be, you know, and all of a sudden just seeing this big advertisement.
Hmm. That side billboard, um because we had to rotate it the to keep it off of the hotel, also uh in in the direction of your residence also puts it at a flatter angle as well. So you truthfully, um if uh you're able to see anything, it would be at a extreme angle. This is that seventy degree viewing angle that kind of heads to your uh the dwelling here. Um so in that instance, um you don't even actually have a direct view um to that that physical phase. As a result of working with the hotel, we've kind of also worked with your your viewing angle as well.
Can can you possibly show me on that map like where where the angle is? I can't, you know, obviously move it on my end to come down a little. So you're saying where does that viewing angle stop? Right at this little
There's the red line at the end of the curves. There's a V. Um so that V, the far right side of that top V that Rick's highlighting now is kind of the first point that the billboard would be visible from an angle perspective. And you're just a little bit in from an angle from that side. So it would be, you would be viewing it directly at an at a pretty sharp angle is what he's saying.
Sixty to seventy degrees would be um a better better example.
Yeah. Um yeah, I'm not sure if this is illustrated for you. Um Ken, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your last name.
Oh, that's okay. It's Myers.
Myers, um I kind of held out a piece of paper notebook in front of me. And then if I kind of turn it about twenty degrees, that's kind of the angle that you would potentially see. Um but again, the light is kind of facing at the highway, not, it's deliberately aimed at the highway, not at you.
Well, yeah, actually.
You're not the intended audience.
Yeah, the i- it's actually headed uh uh to the uh about uh well, shoot, I would I would question probably about four thousand feet technically, uh because it's really pointing uh towards the oncoming traffic uh on the southbound side. Um so as I kind of zoom in, you you see the, let me shut the uh aerial off here for a moment. Uh this is the face that is actually would have any impact on that butter uh Ms. Myers property. Um and that's that extension of the seventy degree angle, which is the side effect of the of that um that side. So definitely, the intent is to to get further to the west. Uh it's almost perpendicular to the highway, truthfully.
And then, Rick, maybe as a a follow-up question, listening to the Myers um comments, there's wa- is, one, is there tree clearing? And two, how close does that get even to the highway? Because I believe you have kind of like a a dash line around where you would clear the trees. It really isn't even up to the boundary of the property line on this side of four four ninety-five. Is that correct?
So so technically, uh the existing cleared area um that already preexists from the encroachment from the hotel is actually where we're planning on putting the um uh the billboard. And there's truthfully very minimal clearing. We're actually doing trimming in order to maintain clearance from uh the uh the support system. Uh so we're not really clearing any vegetation out towards the highway whatsoever. This is meant to be just on top of the trees, uh the existing tree growth. So we're not, we're not intending to take anything, take anything off, truthfully.
Okay.
Does that kind of help on, on?
Mr. Chair. Does that answer your questions at all?
Um, yes, it does answer my questions. It's just hard to really know how it's gonna be until you're living with it. You know, that's my concern and I'm just was, I guess the other question is, it's kind of like at one, on the other side, it's at the thirty degree. And I don't know why they didn't kind of shift it over to the west.
That's, I think, I believe that's where their prop, the property line ends.
Oh, okay.
And there's wetlands over there. Um, so the placement of those black lines that as you see on the screen there, I believe those are wetlands and, uh, buffer zones. Um, so the idea is to keep the, they're keeping it within their property, but also, um, steer and clear of wetlands, which are, uh, as any, anybody who applies for anything in Norton knows are everywhere.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, it would be, it's important for the Myers to know that the reason why the billboard is on the far east part of the, the property law here, uh, twelve feet away from the property line is because, um, they're required to, to be, uh, more than a thousand feet away from any residential, uh, dwelling, putting up any billboard. So, um, that property line, as you can see, goes, uh, all the way further, uh, west, um, all the way up. And it's kind of an L-shaped, um, triangle almost. And they couldn't go further west down four ninety-five exactly where that arrow was because they would be within the one thousand, uh, foot, uh, distance of the Myers' house. So, I mean, that's, that's the requirement, but they were taken into consideration when they decided to put the billboard where they did. And I think, um, you know, part of me was, if there was major, um, objection to this, you know, would it be less obstructive to the Myers if the billboard was further west on the property? So that they would be within that thirty degree, um, triangle, if you would. Now, that would place it inside of a thousand feet, but would be, would the impact be less for the Myers? Uh, if the billboards were angled, um, so that there'd be, you know, no light cast on their property. Kind of a radical thought, may not even be avail, may, may not even be doable under law, but, um.
Yeah, thank you. I, I mean, that, that certainly there's some, there is some nice properties you point out on the left. The unfortunate thing is, is the Wetland Protection Act. Um, and with the wetlands that exist on the edge of four ninety-five, um, and that restriction of a thousand foot, uh, we definitely would have to not only get, uh, a waiver for that thousand foot distance, but we'd also have to, uh, go back before conservation, um, in order to, uh, well, they, they, they certainly weren't, uh, thrilled about our location, but they certainly understood it was pretty much one of the only places, uh, that kind of, you know, the little postage stamp spot that we could place it in.
Yeah. And I believe as Mr. Menusian had said before, this has overlapping approvals of both us and the state. And, uh, even if we like something, the state may say no. Uh, so it's not necessarily, uh, only our brains that we need to convince.
And that, and that thousand foot distance is for a reason. It certainly wasn't just a number brought up. Uh, evidenced by the, the lighting study at five hundred feet. Um, you extrapolate that out to a thousand feet, you know, half, I would assume that it would probably be half the value. Um, and certainly I would argue, yeah, I can see some of these light porch, porch light on a thousand feet away, but it doesn't necessarily have the same impact as it does a hundred feet away.
So could I just clarify for a moment, um? I think what I was saying was what Mr. O'Neill had said about if the angle were to go where that thirty degree marker was in the other direction, you know, in my direction, instead of at the seventy degree. So that is not an option. You know how on, on the other side, the viewing was moved over?
Uh, actually, I do have the thirty degree. I'm, I'm, I apologize. Uh, the, the.
Do you see that? That's what I was.
Yeah, so here's.
That's what I was asking is, I'm not clear on how why is it expanded all the way to seventy degrees on one side, but on the other it's thirty degrees where to me?
Sure, I can answer, I, I, I can answer that, Mr. Menusian. So, um, that was something that the applicant put on their plan because they're so close to the Extended Stay Hotel. Um, to, um, so that's an additional add-on that they've put on that side of the billboard, given the proximity to that property.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we, we greatly appreciate the Myers' concerns, but, um, you know, when we put up a billboard like this, we cannot guarantee that a person a thousand feet or more as Rick stated, will, won't be able to see the sign. But we've demonstrated with the lighting studies that the, the, the intrusiveness of the light itself to pose day-to-day problems for a homeowner are pretty much nonexistent at, at a thousand feet.
Well, I think you would see that what my concern would be as a homeowner here and just making sure that, you know, this is, you know, our right to enjoyment in our backyard as well. And if we do have, you know, across the highway, a billboard and now with its lights as well, you know, shining. I, I don't know how it's gonna affect our right to enjoyment in the backyard. And as a homeowner and as a taxpayer, these are my concerns that I'm bringing up tonight because I was not aware of, um, you know, the layout of this plan. I did receive notice by mail, yes, and I did not, you know, really look into this with everything that's been going on. I didn't know how it would impact us over here. Um, but, you know, I am a bit concerned and I just, just looking at this briefly tonight and just learning how extended stay, you know, I know how close they are, but giving them, you know, going in that thirty degree angle and how I feel like maybe on the other side, if you were to go in that thirty degree angle, you, I wouldn't even, you know, have any much of a concern because it's not even really gonna be right now, you're at the tip, the thousand feet is, is at, yes, it is at one end of the dwelling, but you know, we can, the wooded area, we can see straight through the highway and now we're gonna, you know, hopefully I won't be now staring at a billboard as well.
Hmm, oh, I, I understand. Um, Mr. Ross, I do see you raising your, your virtual hand there. I think that, um, yeah, I think that something that, uh, obviously the, the board has been through a previous billboard project, so there are, um, things operationally that happen with the billboard to balance out light throughout the day and throughout the evening. Um, to obviously minimize its, its impact and, um, as much as can be in those, in those settings. Um, Mr. Ross, if you wanted to add something further?
Yes, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, if it, if it, I think there's a way to resolve this and that would be that we put the light blocking louvers on that face as well and virtually no light will reach, uh, the Myers' household.
Uh, if that is, um, a step you're willing to take, the board can certainly take that into consideration.
It, it, you know, it's an additional cost, but, uh, you know, to, to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the project moving forward, we'd be willing to do that, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I am showing that thirty degree angle, so, um, this line right here is actually the direction of the thirty degree cutoff. So very similar to the hotel.
The inner red?
Yeah, this one right here, um, that I've highlighted of extended. That basically tells you the extension of that thirty degree angle from that face. So it would, uh, quite simply miss even, um, uh, Ms. Myers' property by at least four hundred feet. Um, meaning that, uh, pretty much shouldn't have any impact.
I, I think that there may be, you, I wouldn't say, just to play devil's advocate here, I'm gonna assume that you would prep, that that thirty degree, thirty degree cone would probably be reoriented a little bit to face more the oncoming traffic.
No, th- this is the site plan we have before you. I mean, we're, we're trying, we're not trying to hide things or, or try to do anything, um, but find the best position, uh, for all parties, not, not just us. I mean, obviously we have an, an interest to place a billboard, but working with the hotel as well as working with Ms. Myers. Um, now, uh, Mr. Ross has certainly provided that, yeah, we could most likely put in the thirty degree uh, louvers on both sides and thus, uh, uh, addressing both concerns, um, immediately. So we're certainly amenable to that. So this, we're, we're committed to, this is the location that, that, that we're, there's no gray areas that it might be in.
Okay, now, I wasn't sure if, given that viewing angle, that there might be a tweak, an additional kind of not all the way, but move a little bit more counterclockwise with that cone to make sure that it hit the sweet spot for oncoming traffic for that face. Um, but if that is, um, where you're gonna put it?
That, that would be adverse to the hotel, because again, this is kind of working to the Myers.
I wasn't sure if the V, I'm not sure if you can see my hands.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Tweaked on one side and leave the other side kind of, um, from that perspective, but.
Yeah, construction, construction plans that I have in front of us are, are, that, that's exactly what's shown here, based upon the construction plan.
If, if I may, um, uh, Mr. Griffin is, is correct that we would possibly be able to push the one face out without altering the other face, uh, that's closest to the hotel to give it maybe a better read now that we know that the light blocking louvers would be on it. But it would have no negative effect on the hotel. It'd be exactly how the lighting is displayed here. And if we push the one face out a little wider, it might be more directed toward the highway, but still completely missing the Myers' household.
Okay, so.
I'm not an engineer, but I can move things around most of the time. But, um, thank you, Mr. Ross, for, um, for what you've said and kind of your explanation there. So, Mrs. Myers, the, the adjustment that the applicant is, um, offering is to put on those louvers as well to reduce the viewing angle in that direction. Um, so that the, that thirty degree angle is, um, west of your house.
Mr. Chairman, we would welcome a condition if the board votes to approve, that would indicate that, um, the louvers would have to be put on the other side of the sign so as to protect, uh, at that thirty degree mark, so as to protect the Myers.
Can I just also interject? I'm sorry, I'm not sure who the gentleman was that, um, spoke just a few moments ago who said, he came on with the map and he showed where the thirty degree angle was facing my property. And he said, I just wanted to be clear that he, I believe what I heard him say was it was possible to move that, yes, so that it's safe that way and not at the seventy degree angle where I was previously told it would be. Is that correct? Is this is what I'm hearing?
So I, I'll restate and Rick, if you, or Mr. Ross, if you want to correct me, so the if, as written, as, as drawn right now, that long black line that you see in the middle of your screen would be the thirty degree angle. Um, with the louvers and you can see the house overlaid there in yellow, um, with the louvers on it, um, that sets that thirty degree angle. Um, obviously, the point of the billboard is to be pointed at the oncoming traffic on the, um, southbound side, so on the near side of the highway or the, the bottom side of the highway, looking at the map. So that thirty degree line, um, as they look at the drawings again, um, because again, they're, um, making this adjustment as we speak, they may move it a little bit, um, closer to, um, where you, where your residence is, but they would keep it off of the house, but try and target it maybe a little bit more uh, toward the oncoming traffic as it might sit right on the drawing in front of us right now. But the idea is that there would be a thirty degree viewing angle that would stop, um, kind of angle-wise, um, before it got to you.
I, I think that Mrs. Myers, perhaps, and I don't mean to speak for you, Mrs. Myers, was confused in terms of to, to accomplish what Mr. Ross indicated, we, we likely won't have to physically move the sign. It's just the addition of those louvers that protects you in that thirty degree area.
Okay, perhaps that was what he's saying. I think my confusion was, when I first look at this and I see the angle which was at the seventy degree mark and, and my assumption was, or what originally, I believe what I was being told is that that seventy degree viewing angle, that is where the view would come out, that full seventy degrees. But now I believe I'm being told that you will make the adjustments so that it goes to approximately thirty degrees.
That's correct, and that adjustment is made by the louver system that, uh, you may have heard us speak of before. Mr. Chairman, if, if Mrs. Myers would like another explanation from, um, uh, Mr. Cox of the Louver System, we'd be glad to, um, go over it again for her.
I'll leave that to her. I, uh, I'm not sure, Ms. Myers, if you, uh, heard the earlier part of it, but I think the, uh, the expl, the, the simple explanation is essentially it's similar to the, um, the hoods around the lights at a stoplight, uh, so that when you're driving, you only see the stoplights that are intended for you. Um, and it blocks the light kind of from a sideways perspective.
Yes, I did, I did hear that and I did watch the video.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, are there any additional questions from, uh, Mrs. Myers or the members of the public that are here?
I'd like to talk if I could, unless there's somebody else that's gonna speak.
Uh, see, I, I did not hear, see any virtual hands going up. Uh, so thank you again, Mr. Brady. Um, Mr. Menusian, we have heard kind of your opinion in terms of how the mitigation agreement. Um, and Mr. Brady, um, again, the portal, hear your comments again.
Thank you very much, uh, sir. Um, I don't know Mr. Menusian, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting him, but I will agree with him on one thing starting off, and that is, um, I'm not crazy about New Jersey either, and thank God, Massachusetts isn't New Jersey. Uh, there are a lot of, I, one of my sons lives in New Jersey, um, married Jersey girl, and there are an awful lot of billboards in New Jersey, and they're right on top of one another. And I don't think we want that. I'm, I'm from Walton originally, I live in Walton, and I'm former town moderator. But, um, so billboard is something we want on top of buildings, and the fact is that this billboard is gonna be right on top of Extended Stay America. Now, I understand the lighting that was, uh, suggested and, and changes from the first hearing, but I'm getting the sense that this is a, that we're kind of redesigning this on the fly. And I think that comments made by Mrs. Myers would require that the applicant come back with the designs that they're talking about and give both Mrs. Myers and Extended Stay America an opportunity to review that, that information, the lighting information being offered this evening. And so we can make an informed decision and, and all people involved, members of the public, can, can, uh, make sure that what is being, uh, suggested is in fact what's gonna Uh, suggested is in fact what's gonna occur. So that's my first point. The second point, I think, uh, where I will disagree with Mr. Minusian. Is that um. Um, the planning board uh has has a different function within the town, there's no doubt about that. But the Board of Selectment is the executive authority for the town of Norton. Enacting in that authority, they bind the town of Norton. And the plane would obviously is part of that town, it's part of the body body politic, and it is it is bound by the. Agreements that are made by the Board of Selectmen in certain regards, so. Certainly in this regard, in fact, this planning board was pretty to a decommissioning agreement, was well aware of this mitigation agreement. So, and I think that, and I talking back to the chairman's original comments, with regard to um. You know, you're not a lawyer, but you can understand words, and. I think the word exclusive here is pretty clear. I don't think it takes a brain surgeon to figure out what that word means. If you look up. If you look it up in Webster, it means solely, and I use that in my emails, as a matter of fact, but um. There is also other things that are that are taken into account in this mitigation, not the least of which is my client paid the town of Norton three hundred thousand dollars. To get the right and bargain for that right to um a site a second billboard and. It is not the argument, the argument being made by the applicant that um. That Mr. Carroll suggesting it can own that this board can only grant a billboard uh permit. To another company after Carroll gets his two billboards, it's just not correct. That's not what the mitigation agreement says. And that's not what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting is, it's very clear. That during the during the timeframe, that this mitigation agreement is in effect, okay? With regard to um the exclusive provision of cooperating with Mr. Carroll, during that timeframe. A permit cannot be issued to an uh another entity. And we're still in that timeframe, as a matter of fact, that timeframe, and I sent this over later, was extended specifically by a vote of the Board of Selectmen. Five zero zero vote on September ninth, and it's a very, uh, there was a discussion with regard to this. And it was quite clear that um, the the town wanted to extend that timeframe. And in fact, did extend that timeframe. So I'm guess that if if there's anything patently unfair as. What's patently unfair is for my client to an entrance agreement to get town meeting to change the zoning in the town at the request of. The town manager, which my client put a lot of time, effort, and money in doing this. Uh, to have hearings before boards, to get the the uh bylaw initiated to allow these billboards. To pay three hundred thousand dollars and then being told that the town's not gonna uh uh live up to its side of the bargain. So it there's nothing unconstitutional going on here. Towns entering these types of agreements on a regular basis, they do what for trash, they do bus services. The town clearly, with the advice of council, I might add, uh, entered into this agreement, and we're simply asking that until. Uh, I believe it would be March ninth, that no permit should issue. And at this, uh, the very least, you should continue the hearing based on the the lighting issues that we just talked about. But also based on the merits of the contract and entered into between the parties. Um, there will be an application forthcoming from Mr. Carroll, you will be receiving that within a very short period of time. So we're asking that this this hearing be continued, we're not asking for anything other than that, we're asking for a continued hearing. Uh, until such time as Mr. Carroll's application is uh reviewed by the Planning Board. And uh, of course, if this March ninth comes and goes and there's no decision, then it's a different story, I suppose, but. Um, that's what we are asking for, and I think it's uh reasonable, a a very reasonable request. And I thank you for your consideration of this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make one very, very brief rebuttal?
Sure, thank you again, Mr. Brady, I apologize, I was muted there for a second. Um, Mr. Minusian, I'm. I I will make one caveat, but please go ahead, but uh, again, we're not in court, so. You can say whatever you like, I'm not gonna have uh two lawyers get into an argument.
This is the wrong tribunal or board to have that argument, I agree with.
And I don't intend to argue with Mr. Minusian, he seems like a very, very nice gentleman.
Yeah, I'm sure we've passed across, yes, exactly, we'll probably have a dope beverage someday, so. The um, but but if I, if I may, I would just state for the record, we would object to any further delay, we've given you adequate um. Evidence, and uh I see no reason that I would formally ask the board to close the hearing. And Ms. Meyer could be protected with the condition made by the board. Uh, secondly, and this goes back to what the chairman mentioned earlier. You know, you can read and you're understanding this language. In the language in the mitigation agreement, the town agreed to exclusively cooperate. With the with Mr. Carroll. It doesn't mean it precludes anyone else. That word cooperation uh is operative. Uh, exclusively is just the adjective that's uh, or adverb that's used with it, so uh, I don't think. You know, I'll leave Mr. Brady's feud with the board alone, but I would stress that this board. Should not get into that fray and would ask that the public carry me close. And with that, we thank you.
Well, let me just say this, exclusively means, this is according to the Web- Webster, not any law dictionary. It said it means in an exclusive manner, in a way limited to a single person group. That's what it means. So it's pretty clear what this means during dependency of the timeframe, that's a very important issue. Okay, I think if the town, if the planning board goes ahead and and grants a permit here. There's gonna, there's gonna be a major problem for the town, and we're looking to avoid it, as I should point out, in in my correspondence. Mr. Carroll, to avoid that issue, has is willing to increase his mitigation figure. Uh, to a considerable figure to avoid that, so I bring that to the board's attention, but. With that said, I thank you once again, all all board members and you, Mr. Chairman, for your um kindness and the time you've granted me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Um, okay. So, members of the board, now that we've heard all of that, um, we have an application in front of us. Um, we've heard a lot about that this evening, uh, we all have the mitigation agreement, and um. As we heard uh at the very outset of the meeting, um advisement from town council that. Any decision we make should be separate from what uh the mitigation agreement is with town. Um, we can take that in whatever direction we want, we've heard both sides of that. Um, so from a board action, we can either. The applicant has requested that we close the hearing, we can close the hearing and move forward with the proceedings in that manner, or. We can do otherwise. Uh, so. Obviously, there's a number of different paths in front of us here, um, so if anybody wants to uh share their thoughts, please go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing for special permit one two five eight seven.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Um. Regarding closing the public hearing for this application. Um, again, as Mr. Minusian has said, with the potential for a condition for the additional louvers. Um, on the left side of the billboard. Um, Paul, is this a a site plan as well approval or just a special permit?
It's just the special permit, but 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 that plan is attached to it.
Okay, so if we needed a new plan to attach to this special permit. If we closed the public hearing, would that preclude us from attaching that plan or no?
Well, we could certainly put the condition in, but then also direct the applicant to make a uh for. To to modify, well, to modify the plans. We'd wanna, I think we would want to see a modified. Plan attached to the special permit.
But in terms of order of operations, you don't see a challenge in closing the public hearing from that perspective, if we're comfortable with. A tweak to the site plan as I discussed this evening.
Right, if you don't have any additional questions and it's just simply the applicant providing. The uh revised plans, then I I don't think closing the public, if you're doing that as part of the direction, then you should be fine.
Okay. Motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion?
Uh, just quick discussion, the, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the site plan that was reviewed tonight. With the slight rotation in the um. Uh, you know, in in the unit in the billboard, the only enhancement to that, the only change is adding the louvers to the opposite side. Uh, to protect the um the Myers property. I think that's the only difference in the in the uh site plan and.
About adjusting the uh the V on the left side. As well, to potentially face it maybe more directly to the southbound traffic.
Can I come with your confirmation on that?
Yes, I do.
That, no, that was, that was something that I think that they had, um, that Mr. Ross had suggested, if they're going to look at it, they would make sure the thirty degree angle was. Short of the Myers, but that they might adjust it a little bit. Mr. Ross, I see you have your hand up. We've yet, we have not yet closed the hearing, so please go ahead.
Yeah, we we are fine leaving the angle the way it is. There needs to be no other adjustment except for adding the space with the louvers on it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
That's how I understood it, to Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, well, that keeps the thirty degree angle even further away from the Myers properties, so. Um, okay. So the applicant is not looking to adj- to address the site plan other than the louvers and addressing the light angle, uh, which. Isn't a physical build. Um, okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, we would, I'll go through the the vote here to close, this is just to close the public hearing. Uh, Wayne? Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the public hearing for special permit one two five eight seven is now closed. With that said, is there any further action that we would like to take at this time regarding this, regarding this application? Uh, in relation to any of the bu- any of the previously mentioned um. Issues.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve special permit one two five eight seven. With the um condition that the louvers be placed not only um. Alongside of the Extended State America, but also opposite to that uh in the direction of the Myers property as discussed.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Kevin, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Again, this is to approve the project with that condition, um, and just to restate, that would be. Um. Kind of contrary to the discussion regarding the mitigation agreement, so just to make sure we know what we're doing here and restating it. Is any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none. Wayne?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay.
Thank you very much, folks. Stay safe during all this turmoil we have outside.
Thank you, Mr. Minusian. Um, Paul, I'm not sure if you've drafted any of the um. Decision at this point, but we can work on that and um continue in that respect.
Right, I I haven't begun drafting it, but we'll do so within a day or so.
Understood. Um, from your perspective, Paul, is there anything else that we, any other actions we need to take on this agenda item at this point?
No, not at this time.
Okay, um, maybe it makes sense to review the draft decision at the next meeting. Um, there's not a whole lot of specific conditions, but since we have one specifically called out in the motion, it probably makes sense just to review it.
Okay, I will, you know, I'll I'll have that draft. Uh, you know, should be finished this week, and then I'll distribute that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we have one other additional item on our agenda this evening, which is special permit one two five one two, which is sixty six West Main Street. Which is the application for the construction of an athletic field with athletic lighting fixtures exceeding twenty feet in height. Which I did not know was a special permit condition we needed to make.
Well, it it the the bylaw actually doesn't specifically say special permit, but it says an approval by the planning board. And there are, there was case law in other parts of Massachusetts where a special permit was issued for exactly the same thing.
Get really specific with these bylaws sometimes, okay? So, uh, I do, I did see a few additional people pop their cameras open when I started talking about this project. Um, so I think some people on the call already kind of have some idea of what we're talking about, but um. I'll let the the team on the line here get started and introduce themselves and go from there.
Good evening, my name is Bree Sullivan, I am the chief civil engineer at Gale Associates, and I have Ryan Thackeray with me today. He is a staff engineer uh on the project. We are the design firm that was retained by the. Town of Norton's um school to uh do the campus renovation at Norton High School. And Henry Yell School. Um, may I have um permission to share my screen?
You should have it with the big green button at the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
I struggled with it myself earlier, so uh.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
So, starting with the big picture, the project uh is planned at actually, um, it's. It's on record as sixty six, which is the high school, but it's actually at the Yale School and the high school property, this area back here. And the project includes reconstruction of the um track and field over here, the football field at the high school. Um, and the multipurpose field in the center here, in the area between the Yale School and the Norton High School. And there's also a small area here that's proposed for tennis courts. I will call up that plan so you can see what it's gonna look like. This is the track and field, this is the proposed multipurpose field, and these are the tennis courts.
Lag, but I'm still just seeing the aerial view.
Okay, let's see, how do we do this then?
Bree, is that a, is that a different screen that you wanna show?
Yeah, it must do it per window instead of screen, so let me share the window, let me see.
Yeah, you're, that's right, it does.
How about that?
That looks like with multipurpose field and a track and a football field.
And the tennis courts are over here, so um these three fields. Um, the proposal is to have new athletic lighting in these three fields. Currently, the football field has lighting. Um, existing right now. Um, I believe, I I didn't get a measurement on those light towers that are there right now. They're probably about fifty or sixty feet, the existing light towers that are there, but I don't know the exact height. Um, so there is existing lighting that exceeds twenty feet right now. Now, I'm gonna stop sharing and share the plan of the lighting poles. Let me see here. That is. Don't see it here, so let me call that one up. Once again. Let me try this again. There it is. So, the lighting manufacturer that we get to design our lights is Musco Lighting, they are the industry standard in. Athletic lighting, uh, outdoor and indoor athletic lighting, um, and they're most well known for their um luminaire design. With the sharp cutoff angle. So, um, this project is going to require um several light towers. So um, this project is going to require um, several light towers. Um, between forty, fifty, and eighty feet. So the track and field. Has four light towers. These light towers here are approximately in the same locations as the current light towers. These are eighty feet. The multipurpose field. Has one, two, three, four, five, six light towers. Uh, these are also eighty feet tall. Uh, and then the tennis courts, uh, and these are optional, they're, they're not necessarily gonna do this as part of this project, but maybe in the future. Um, has four light towers here, and one of these is forty feet and the other two, the other three are fifty feet. So um, these light towers, uh, actually, no, this is. Four more here as well. So um, two of these are forty feet and the rest are fifty feet. So um, basically, the, the light units have um, hoods on them. I know we were talking a lot about, about um, shading. For the LEDs on the billboard.
When it rains, it pours.
And when it rains, it pours. Um, so these lights are specifically designed to be at background light levels within, within. Probably ten feet of the field. Um, and Musco Lighting is the industry leader in that sharp cutoff angle. We did a project like ten years ago. Um, with these lightings, with these lights before they used LEDs. Um, and we actually had to add supplemental lights for the parking lot because people couldn't find their cars at night. Uh, closer to home in Norwood, a few years ago, we did a project where we replaced their, their floodlights with the sharp cutoff Musco lighting. And there was a, there was an abutter who actually complained that he couldn't mow his lawn at night anymore because the lights didn't cast on his property. This is a true story, I'm not making this up. Um, so uh, with respect to light pollution, um, if you were in a butter and you were looking and you could see the towers. You could see the lights, but they certainly wouldn't cast any, any sort of illumination on your property, even if you were right next to the field. So um, that's pretty much it. Um, I can uh. Take any questions? Uh, it's a pretty simple, pretty simple application. Uh, the, the regulation is twenty feet. Um, the tallest towers we'll have will be eighty feet. That's pretty much it.
Just in terms of existing conditions, you mentioned they were already higher than twenty feet. Just in terms of how high they are now, just in terms of. Um, has that measurement been taken or not really?
So the existing light poles, I did not measure them. I, I assume they're fifty or sixty feet, because that's typically what we see for, for. The old school light towers.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was involved with the original lights and that does sound to be right around sixty feet.
Okay, and the idea with these ones is you go taller and you can go more focused and. Sharp cutoff.
Sharp cutoff, in fact, on football fields, they actually have to put a few lights pointing up. Because when they kick, when they kick the ball, the ball gets lost in the darkness above, because it goes up, sometimes it can go above the light pole or the cutoff, the cutoff. Line. Um, so they've had to add lights that cast light up, um, to, to, to illuminate the football when they kick it.
What you're saying is we need to get a really good punter.
Exactly.
Listen, Chair, can we put, put back up the overall site plan again? Just to see, I don't. The public housing, senior housing is the only bu- abutter I believe. It does not sound like there are any lights going up in the back corner of the. Yellow property. Um, so I don't think we have any. Private home or butters at all.
So you're referring to the Norton Housing Authority over here?
Yes.
So the closest light tower would be, so if, if you know the layout of the existing field, um. Probably the closest one would be just to this corner of the, the bleachers.
We do see your cursor, yeah.
Yep. The other one would be over here, but like I said, the cutoff length, angle, the cutoff, light cutoff at like ten feet away from the field is, is background.
In that there's, there's no part of the project further up to the right with that uh. That pit field that they uh, refer to, there's nothing going on back there, correct?
So this is gonna remain untouched. Um, the limit of, excuse me, the tennis courts is, is right about here. About the limit of the tennis courts. And, and as I said, you know, the permit will include lighting for the tennis courts, but. The light poles are not proposed as part of this, this project, this construction. The courts are, but the lights are not.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Um. Members of the board, any additional questions for uh, Ms. Sullivan and her team? I know we have one member of the public who wanted to ask a question. Okay, Ms. Sullivan, you can just leave the site plant, the uh, the map view up there for a second. Uh, Mr. Dumont, if you wanted to just unmute and state, uh, I know you put it in the chat, but just in terms of uh. Stating your, your name and address for the record and then uh. Ask me your question.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate that. David Dubon, twenty-seven Barrow Street. Ms. Sullivan, thank you for a great presentation. I'm not here to slow anything down. If you were to, uh, if you're able to expand your map out, I am a quarter mile through the woods southeast. Of the football field. So as we see Summer Street to our right, we continue to expand out. At the corner of Summer Street and Barrow Street, I know it looks as though I should have no reason to even bring up a question. And yet, the sixty-foot towers that have been installed when I moved back to town seven years ago. Um, not an issue, you know, it's football season, the trees are still up, it's all swamp land, I'm fine. Please God, we go and we win a, a season, and we're into November and the leaves are coming down, but when I start to hear eighty feet. And most of the trees in the swamp land that goes, I mean, I do see the lights, not a big deal. I hear the football crowd, not a big deal, big boy. But the eighty feet, talk to me about what I will see. I, I heard your presentation, it makes me feel real comfortable, the lights are gonna be barely enough for the football team to even play. Um, but talk to me about literally drawing a straight line southeast from the football field, right to the corner of Barrows and Summer Street. And tell me what I'll see when the leaves are off the trees.
So I can tell you the difference between the current luminaires that you see and, and these luminaires are day and night, quite literally. Um, so if you look in that direction, you are going to see the lights when they're on, but. It's very likely that you'll see a much less smaller spot than you see before, because the light is much more directional. And I'm gonna show you um, a picture of what the lights look like at the top of the tower.
Thank you.
So you can see, you know, the further away you get, the less of the light sliver that you're gonna see with those, the uh, shading here. And so you can see that these towers over here, you know, it's really just lines of light that you see with, as opposed to the current luminaires, which are round. Spotlights essentially. So it presumably, your view may be better with these new light fixtures than it is now. Now, yes, they are gonna be higher in the sky, but the light is not gonna be casting out further um, than the current luminaires, that's for sure. Okay, I can actually zoom in here so you can see.
No, I, I, I have a strong confidence of what you're presenting, there's no, there's no smoke and mirrors, so please, um. Don't look at me to slow this down. I love the progress that the town is making, so thanks for making a great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dumont. Uh, are there any additional questions from any members of the public who are on the call or any additional questions from members of the board? Who thought of them in the last couple of minutes? Well, I'll give the other members a chance to. To speak, Ms. Sullivan. I saw in the plan set that we have here. What I saw was a ninety percent de- design submission, is that correct? Just in terms of understanding the stage that we're in and what actions we're looking for at this point?
That's correct. As of this, this time, we're, we're, we're in permitting right now with um. So here at the planning board and as well as the conservation commission. Um, so the, the plans are really closer to a hundred percent, but the construction plans haven't been issued yet. Because we're still in permitting at uh, conservation, so there may be some minor changes, but we're not gonna be moving light poles and fields or anything like that, so.
Yeah, and in terms of the, the gateway to a hundred percent is having finalized construction plans?
That's correct, that's correct.
So until you get permits, this is as done as it's gonna get?
Correct.
Okay.
Chair, motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Alan, for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? For a special permit one, two, five, one, two. Again, closing the public hearing means we won't have any additional comments. So Peter, if you wanted to say something, now's your time.
Um, I'm, I love the project and it is gonna do good and I will continue to go to the games. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be look good when it's gonna be finished, oh, go answer!
Thank you, Peter. Okay. Hearing no additional comments regarding the motion to close, I will go to the vote. Wayne, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, test, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any additional actions that any board member would like to take?
Chair, motion to approve special permit one, two, five, one, two.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Okay. Hearing none, Wayne?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So. Project, the application is approved and Paul will be in touch regarding the decision and any next steps. Uh, from a procedural, et cetera standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Very much. Okay. That is the last item on our agenda this evening. Um, Paul, did you have anything further that you wanted to say for the board in terms of um, any additional items to discuss?
Well, just a, a couple of things that will, are coming up in the near future. One is, um. Some of you, some of the, uh, those of you who were here back in twenty nineteen might remember we had a surety discussion. On Fuller Drive, uh, regarding uh, release of remaining funds that dealt with uh. Uh, roadway improvements, uh, five thousand dollars. Well, the, the applicant is asking again to release the remaining funds, so uh. Going to put that on the agenda. Uh, I'm going to, we're not required to, but I'm going to go ahead and notify the residents on Fuller Drive. Because you'll remember, there were a number of people who showed up uh, back in twenty nineteen, so we'll let them know this is back up for discussion. Uh, you may recall that the primary issue holding up the release of it was that. When the subdivision was approved back in the nineties, they were required to put water lines in the ground and there was a fire hydrant.
Right, I was gonna say, Paul, wasn't it the fire hydrants?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, it's that one.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's, it's coming back. He's asked for, Dan, Dan, uh, Palilio was asked to bring it back, so we'll do it. And we'll notify, we'll get a, a, a notice out to the uh, people on Fuller Drive. So that's, that's coming up, um. Thursday, we will have our subcommittee meeting, so uh, Julie. Uh, Steve Pr- oh, no, I'm sorry, Steve Allen's on that, I'm sorry.
Allen's on that with me.
I've got a couple of meetings that night, but uh, you're second that night. So, and uh, David Wren from the ZBA, uh, will be uh, on Zoom. Uh, to go over a couple of proposed modifications to the zoning bylaw. And then uh, they'll give me direction what to do with it. And that's, that is my, that's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, um, yeah, one, thank you. One question, so Paul, has, has anything additional been done on Fuller Drive? Um, since the last time we had the meeting and spoke about their issues with the, the black uh, fire hydrants that are not connected?
Uh, nothing, no, nothing has been done. Uh, I've, according to the applicant, and I've, um, I know that we've not connected that lineup. Uh, to, to the hydrant. So I'll dig in more on that, uh, get feed, more, more contemporary feedback from the fire department and the water department on that issue. But bear in mind that the release was originally, the, the funding, the remaining funding was held. About ten years ago, uh, to make sure that when, when uh. When the, when the road was released from surety, they left five thousand dollars left, uh, five thousand dollars in balance with the treasurer. In, in case there was an issue when two lots that hadn't been developed. Were developed that they wouldn't damage the curb.
Okay.
Uh, we did have information two years ago from the highway superintendent that the work was done, there was no damage. And um, but then the conversation shifted from the curb to trying to connect the fire hydrant. But the hydrant's not there, so we'll, I'll, I'll get, again, I'll, I'll coordinate with the fire department and the water department. And give you the latest on that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the, the, the vote, the decision would be ea- be easy if the fire hydrants were connected. So I don't know if the applicant just thought maybe, since the other two lots have been developed now, or time has passed, that the decision would be any different. But I'm sure, I'm sure the abutters are still gonna have the same complaints they had before.
Uh, yeah, I will make sure they get the notice, um. You know, it just, I, you know, back then, the city had a, the town had a policy of. Requiring subdivisions to put water lines in, even if we didn't have any plans to actually connect it to the, the main system, so. Um, I, I recall that conversation from a couple of years ago that the water superintendent said. We could never connect to those lines now, they've been sitting idle for twenty years, they, they. You know, there would be a whole, uh, problems with it, so. Uh, but we'll find out more.
Okay, well, we will hear more about that at a future meeting. Uh, unless has, anybody has anything else further, I would look for action from the board.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to um, to thank uh, Brian for sending the. Uh, the letter to the Myers about the um. You know, the billboard project that is not, was not required, it was kind of going above and beyond and. As we saw in the meeting today, you know, the outcome was that the Myers are more protected now from. You know, the impact of the uh, the lights on their, on their property and standard of living, so. Just goes to show you that when we go a little bit above what's required by law, you know, it. Uh, sometimes has a good impact on our uh, neighbors. So, thank you, Brian.
Uh, and I think Brian's doing a great job on the meeting minutes, especially going back and having to. Relearn and re-watch all that, that we went through over the summer, so. You're doing a fantastic job, Brian. I don't know how you're doing it, but you're capturing every word I say.
For better or for worse, Julie, right?
Oh, it's always for better, it's always for better, guys, you know that.
Well, conflating this with marriage, that's a line don't, I wouldn't cross.
You're doing a great job, Brian. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Kevin for the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.